Good job. It's like, uh, Tommy's up the street. People sound like they're coming. They will come.
Yeah.
He put them on.
I saw my brother. Just. She's not very patient. She's just like, oh, does he use a tough chance to say?
Matt, that's real far. He was going to try to come. Pleasure. Call him up with five, five, six.
Okay, is it any time soon?
We're in. It's.
That's.
That's all.
That's bad.
That was. I have. I have. You know. I want to.
Just see. Yeah, you see. Friends want to knock the wall down. Yeah. Yeah. I love it. And box. I like that choice. It's always ordered. I do like it.
Where we're from. Where we're at. I used to. Oh, you know, you want to be.
Yeah, so two hundred dollars a box. I love it. It's. I would like. He might. Who would know? But I said, oh, my.
You play fast.
What do you mean more? Do you just have?
Do you think?
Hello, everybody. Good evening. Welcome to the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July the first, twenty twenty five. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To their public which stands. Our nation under God and visible, the liberty of justice.
Thank you. Uh, please be aware this meeting is being, uh, livestreamed on our YouTube channel and that the meeting may also be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. Uh, first item of business is, uh, public comment. So this is the opportunity to raise an issue or ask questions of the staff and board, uh, for any item that is, for anything you may have that is not an item on the agenda. So if it's on the agenda, there's an opportunity for public comment at that time. So is there anybody here who has a public comment this evening? Yes, Doug.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Independence Day, everybody. I'd just like to, uh, Doug White, West Ocean, just encourage everybody to, uh, make a, uh, membership donation to Good Fellowship. And, um, do a good service. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
I benefited from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Is there anyone else with a comment? Mr. Lanes?
Good evening, Mr. Walsh and, uh, distinguished Board of Supervisors. Uh, I just wanted to add a few quick follow-up questions in regards to the situation in nine oh five West Down Road. Um, the first one is, we understand that the sheriff sale, which was scheduled for June eighteenth, has been stayed. And we were curious if there were any updates regarding that status. And number two, uh, we would like to petition the township to, um, uh, petition the mortgage company, which I assume is Wells Fargo, to place an airtight tarp on the roof to prevent further catastrophic damage. Um, and, uh, I think those are the main questions we have at this point.
Okay, with respect to the first one, you correct. The, uh, the sheriff sale was stayed. Um, it has not been rescheduled. So Chris, I don't know if you have any further information on what that means specifically?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
So at this point, you know as much as we do. Um, presumably enough has been paid that the mortgage company is not continuing with the sheriff sale process because state just puts it in a whole pan. Uh, with respect to your second question, uh, I don't know about that. Can we petition? Uh, who do we, who do we think we're working with, too?
So Shelby has, Shelby has contacts with a, um, a company who's been managing it for the, for the bank. I can certainly ask her to, to be in touch with them.
Okay, now we have asked them to secure the property, right?
Yes.
So we have already asked that. So, Mr. Lance, I presume what you're saying is what you see on the roof is not sufficient to prevent water, let's put it that way.
His pattern of behavior is just to throw, like, one little tarp on the roof and then it flies off. It's not airtight.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll ask, uh, is there any officer to follow up and work with the, the company that's tasked with securing the property?
Very good. And one other quick point, if I may. Um, there was a report that was compiled by the neighbors some twenty years ago by, and presented to Mr. Ray Halverson, um, which includes specific documentation regarding the Native American burial ground on the site. Uh, we are in the process of trying to locate any additional copies, but it is supposedly in the, in the possession of the township.
Do you have a specific year it was actually provided? It's just when we look for records, we, we have a records destruction policy. If it was twenty-five years ago or twenty years ago, if there's a more specific date, we might be able to find it.
Mr. Chairman, I was, I was approached about this early in June. I spoke to the senior most staff member who would be aware of something like this, and he said that he had no knowledge of this document.
Okay. So unfortunately, this is the last house I've got on the coffee table.
Just a follow-up on your questions there. What's the status of the citations and the warrants, uh, before the judge? Can you talk on that question?
There is a hearing scheduled for July fifteenth for all ninety-six citations that Shelby has filed.
What date was that?
July fifteenth.
Which, which is at two o'clock, I believe?
Yes.
Now, that's a public hearing?
I believe so, but I can't answer that question.
It said the judge's magistrate officer, anybody could come.
Very good. Is there anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else with a public comment?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick to follow up on that. So Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith and the township solicitor will be attending that on behalf of the township.
Shelby Smith.
Yeah. Yes, Shelby Smith, I apologize.
Okay, want to answer the question? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, go, go. Um.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name, then. Besen.
This is about something else.
Absolutely.
My name is, uh, Tammy Oberman, and I live on Falcon Lane, um, three houses from West Town Road. And I've always been curious as to why West Town Road, Little Shylo and Falcon Lane is not a four-way stop sign. There's a major accident there all the time. We always, there's been cars flipped upside down, cars in the tree, cars. It's, it's because people who come down that street don't realize it's not a four-way stop and they turn and there, there's a major accident there. So I was always thinking, and you know, that someone's going to have to, you know, die there before. And maybe there's a reason why it's not a four-way stop from a traffic sense, but I was just always curious.
Actually, I think I can answer that.
Thank you.
I actually brought that up at the last, last traffic meeting that are held quarterly at the township. Um, so Brian, yes, sir, who's our police officer, is looking into that right now.
Okay.
And, um, he was going to have a report basically back at the next quarterly meeting, which you may want to attend.
Okay.
I don't know the date, but it should be on the website.
Okay.
And we do hold them quarterly on any traffic issues that are in the name, in the area in West Ocean. And I can tell you, he is extremely efficient and follows up on every single one.
Okay.
Doesn't study, so.
So that's a different township meeting than just a traffic township?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
It's all about traffic.
Perfect.
Then, all right, so I encourage you to attend the next one.
Iowa?
I know Brian, he will have an answer for us at that meeting.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to add.
Would you mind stating your name, please, just?
Oh, sorry, Carol Lee in, in Falcon Lane.
Okay.
Um, I wanted to add to the comments Stephen made about the Indian burial ground and the paperwork that was handed in. I believe the paperwork was handed in by Bill Ilger, who is, he's actually not here tonight. Uh, and he's, oh, here. Why didn't you say so?
I've been there for thirty-four years.
He's the one who handed in the paperwork and it would have been prior to Mr. Halverson's death. So that will give you a point of reference.
I never made a copy. I know. I kicked myself.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I wanted to make a comment on, uh, nine oh five West Down Road also.
Please just state your name, please.
Tom Edgcombe. And, um, my question is, I know as a township began doing it, because it's a private property. Um, unless they have plans to develop it, then you would get involved. But, uh, from a safety standpoint, that property is dilapidated. The roof is falling in. I believe there's mold throughout. And then there's an old hay bourn, which, uh, I was told burned down years ago. The roof is gone, but the remaining walls are still there, stone walls. I don't know how secure they are. And, uh, kids are back there a lot, especially in the summer. Uh, they come along the creek, they go up there. I can hear them where they ride their bikes up the driveway. Uh, if I was a kid, that's where I'd be. Um, and it, from a safety standpoint, I would hate to hear that someone was hurt or even killed back there because we, as adults, let this happen. Um, I just, I think something needs to be done as far as, from a safety standpoint. Uh, I don't know, from that, obviously a township has more power than the individual group, small group. Um, if we could look into doing something, that'd be great.
Tom, we, we have, believe we have, we have ninety-six citations. We issued against the owner, Mr. Kravitz, over the years. And we've really accelerated over the past several months. The direction of this hearing is for July thirteenth, is going before the magistrate judge, gosh, about these citations and his failure to comply. So, um, even before that, there were citations issued, which he did not comply with, for which bench boards have been issued to him. Again, this show is supposed to be addressing that. So it's kind of, we did everything we can from a township perspective. Now it's in hands of the court.
I mean, I think one thing we could do is, um, reinforce with our settling officer and legal counsel at the hearing that, you know, there is significant safety concerns now about the property, structural integrity and the risk to people on the property who may be transposing, but it's still, it's, as you said, it's a, it's a concern.
There's no signage, so.
There's no way that we would be able to, I guess, use township resources to secure that site on our own and then just, like, bill the owner?
Believe it.
I'm one, I don't know if that would come under the Property Maintenance Code because there are certain provisions under the Property Maintenance Code where the township can go in, remediate the violation, leave the property for the cost. That would probably best be a question for, for Shelby or Brian. I don't know if you know the answer to that.
Shelby or Kristen.
Yeah, so Shelby or Kristen could answer that question. Um, it may be possible, but I, I can't answer that.
Something we should look into.
Yeah, we should. That's a good question. That's fine answer to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else with a question? But I will thank you all for, uh, your comments and questions this evening.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, going back to the question about traffic safety, the next Traffic Safety Committee meeting is September eighteenth at five P M. at the township building.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. Okay, last chance, we can, any questions or comments? Very good. Well, we want to the next agenda item, which is item number four. Uh, possible appointment of Michael McCarthy as the Fire Marshal, John Bezwick as Deputy Fire Marshal, and Lisa Cabada as the Emergency Management Coordinator. So before the board this evening is the appointment of those, uh, folks to the roles I just described. The Township's Director of Code Enforcement, Andrea Tester, has now retired after twenty years of dedicated service, and these appointments will fill those duties she previously held. Uh, please be advised, Board, that Mr. McCarthy and Ms. Cabada are currently the appointed Deputy Fire Marshal and Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator, respectively. So does anyone on the board have any questions about these appointments? Okay, is there any, anyone here who has a question about the appointments? Okay, I'll make a motion then to, um, appoint Mike McCarthy as our new Fire Marshal, John Bezwick as our new Deputy Fire Marshal, and Lisa Cabada as our Emergency Management Coordinator. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nate. Any final questions or comments from the board or anyone in attendance on the motion? Very good. Then we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing no, the motion passes five zero. Next item of business is agenda item number five, which is possible authorization to advertise amendment to chapter fifty-seven of our ordinances. Chris, would you like to introduce this?
Aye. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so before the board this evening is possible authorization to advertise a proposed amendment to chapter fifty-seven, which governs parking recreation areas in the township. The proposed ordinance would amend section fifty-seven dash three E one as it pertains to the timing for permit submissions for the use of the township's parking recreation areas. Um, so for background information, in approximately twenty nineteen, the township began requiring that applications for use of the township's park and recreation facilities be submitted two weeks in advance. This allows for adequate scheduling and other needs to be made. Uh, recently, it was discovered that this section of the code of ordinances was not updated to reflect this requirement. The current ordinance specifies seventy-two hours, which is not sufficient, particularly in terms of ensuring staffing. And this ordinance amendment would update the code of ordinances accordingly. Uh, permits are only required in situations where there is a group of twenty-five or more people who are going to be in attendance. So if you wanted to go with your family just to, like, have lunch at the park, you wouldn't need any kind of apartment. This is more for, like, if you wanted to have, say, like, a family reunion at the park. Uh, the proposed ordinance was reviewed by the Park and Recreation Board at their meeting on June eighteenth, where it was recommended for adoption. And if authorized for advertising, the proposed ordinance could be considered for adoption at the July fifteenth meeting of the board.
So just a question. So if there's either twenty-five people, twenty-five more people, and they, you know, at the last minute sort of say, look, we wanted to together with this group this weekend at the township park, they're going to need to come for a permit if they're not going to be able to get one?
I think we can make certain exceptions if there's, if the board is okay, I think if there are last-minute exceptions, I think we could make those. If they, it's really more if they require things like traffic control, need the restaurants open, open and closed, if we need to have parks members on staff. I mean, and truthfully, if we don't have any staffing for people, then it might be one of those questions, this might be one of those situations where you are out of luck. But I think we can, we find a way. So I think we can find a way to make it work. If the board is okay, if this is adopted and the board's okay with bending the rules in certain situations.
I just feel that, like, I, I pause when we are giving it up to the discretion of, let's say, Ken or somebody to say, you know, we'll make an exception for you, but we won't make an exception for somebody else, like, if they require something different. It just, I feel like it opens up a whole other thing, but, um, I understand why we're doing this. I just want to make sure that we're doing it the right way.
We can always bring it to the board. I have no problem doing that. And we can make certain except, we can make exceptions if there needs to be exceptions made. I have absolutely no problem doing that.
We have, how like this is going to occur, really?
The, this was brought to our attention with a, with a request for a significantly large gathering, and that's what, this was like maybe six weeks ago, and that's when this came to our attention.
Oh, because they wanted to do it?
Yeah, it was, it was like a week note, it was like made of a week or a week notice, and it was a, it was going to be a significantly large event.
Meaning what, a hundred people kind of thing?
More like a thousand.
Okay. We should accommodate that, right?
Which, um, which.
Plus we have to have police presence.
We, it brought it to our attention. The fortunate thing was, we already had a reservation that had been booked months in advance that was on our calendar. Um, but what it allowed us to do was look at our ordinance, and that's when Ken and I realized that this was never updated.
Yeah, so it's already in there, it's just doesn't, it's not reflected in our actual code.
It's on our permit application, but not in the code.
I just think about somebody who, like, is planning for a birthday party or something, and then it, something falls through and they want to go to the park, but they can't because they need to, you know. Just want to make sure that in, in, in certain situations, people aren't going to be, yeah, denied for no reason, but.
Well, I think, I mean, Chris, you were suggesting in that circumstance that the, the applicant could request an exception and you would run, you, you can, would run it past the board protection, depending on what it was, right?
Yeah, because it's ultimately a policy decision, so I, I have no issue, you know, running it past the board if there's an exception that needs to be made. And I would do that for anybody.
Okay. All right then, so, uh, we've discussed it. Is, uh, a board member willing to make a, a motion here? This is, uh, let's see, is this to just authorize the advertisement of the proposed amendment, correct?
Aye, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so.
Okay, you got a motion from Johnny, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any public comments or questions on the motion? Yes, Barbara?
If this goes through, could we advertise this in our newsletter, maybe, beginning of summer or spring, so that people are a little more aware?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea because, and I'm aware, we made the, the permit form change, Chris.
It was.
It'd been in the newsletter, do you?
It probably would, it was in two thousand nineteen, so before my time. So I, I would venture to guess not, but I'm happy to. I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Well, in the newsletter, on the very first page, it does summarize everything that happened at the board meeting, so it is kind of in there.
I, I think, I think Mr. Walsh is talking more about, like, a specific article about, and I'm happy to do that, too.
Yeah, just to clarify, that's a good. All right.
And so we had a motion in a second.
Yeah, sorry, to take a vote. Is there any other questions on the motion? There isn't, so let's take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing no, the motion passes five zero. Moving on to agenda item six, which is possible approval of an easement agreement with Hickside Friends Cemetery. Chris?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening is possible approval of the easement agreement with the Hickside Friends Cemetery for the Roseville Avenue sidewalk project. Uh, by way of background information, at the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, the board, uh, reviewed the potential installation of sidewalk that was submitted by a request from the Cambridge Hall Apartments, and it would connect the Cambridge Hall Apartments east to an existing sidewalk connection on Roseville Avenue. At the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, the board adopted resolution twenty-six twenty twenty-three, which authorized the submission of a local share account grant program application for the installation of sidewalk in the area that was submitted in November of twenty twenty-three, and the award, oh, an award in the amount of eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars was received by the township in October of twenty twenty-four. At the end of twenty twenty-four, at the final meeting of the year, the board approved a proposal from Carol Engineering Corporation for professional services for this project. Um, the easement agreement has been reviewed and signed by the property owner, and if approved by the board, will be recorded, excuse me, accordingly, and the township will proceed forward with bidding out the project.
Thank you, Chris. Does the board have any questions about the easement agreement?
I just have one question. Uh, it says we're going to have easement to maintain. Does that include the responsibility of the port and township for snow and ice removal?
Uh, no, Mr. Vice Chairman, that would be a responsibility of the property owner for our code of ordinances, and I do recall in the, from reviewing the meeting minutes when this was first discussed, the Hickside Friends Cemetery does lease space to the church that's at the corner of Rosedale and, um, New Street, I believe it's Calvary Lutheran. And I remember one of their, one of the representatives from there saying that they would maintain it for snow ice removal.
I have one question, I'll tip to the, um, the sketches that provided. The proposed temporary construction easement appears to be less in size than the proposed permanent easement. Is that, do you know if there's a reason for that?
I'll defer to Brian, because I believe you worked with Chris on these, on these exhibits. You know the answer to that, Brian?
The temporary easement is located to the south of the permanent easement. The permanent easement fits inside of.
Okay.
If you look at the exhibit, the left-hand corner, it says proposed permanent easement, that's the easement of the line there for the permanent. So the permanent is between the roadway and the temp. The temp is still give us room to construct what we need to construct.
Okay.
For equipment.
Okay, so would I now expect there to see that the permanent easement would also have been shaded in as part of the temporary easement?
No, because the agreement specifically is for a temporary and a permanent. There's two separate easements.
Fair enough.
So where does it talk about maintenance in the agreement?
It is in. I believe it's.
The granted permanent easement, page two, section five, it says, uh, this is the body. Um, contract with the investor to commit to maintain the sidewalk and prove it's in good working condition, including that limitation of the access and so on and so on. It just has the word maintain, you know, just specify. What do you mean by maintain? Does that include snow and ice removal? Can you clarify that to the document?
Well, I, should that be in the agreement?
It's already specified in our ordinance that's, and our code of ordinances, that snow and ice removal is the requirement of the, um, abutting property owner.
Is it, is it behooved to Hickside to get the agreement in place with the church for the snow and ice removal? Otherwise, without a formal agreement, who would the township, if there was an issue with snow removal, who would be contacting Hickside to get it fixed?
We would enforce that. We would enforce against that.
All right, so it's on then to get whatever agreement they feel is necessary, then. Actually, you okay with the fact that it's covered under our other ordinances, responsibility for snow ice removal, even though it's not in the easement agreement? It's really about the definition of maintain, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just know that, like, when easements are challenged, you know, when this kind of thing is challenged, they look to the easement, the first place to look. If the language needs to be clear in the easement about who's supposed to maintain the easement. And so I just want to make sure that.
Chris, can we?
Chris will clear who's maintaining.
I, I spoke, I have emails with Ms. Lamborn about snow and ice, about this very topic, and she recalled Calvary Lutheran Church agreeing to maintain snow and ice.
I know, but that's not going to hold up. Like, if, if someone were to fall, and then the question becomes who's supposed to maintain this thing, and they say, well, she said this one time that she was going to do it, that's not going to be enough to. I'm just saying, if it's in here, if the Calvary Lutheran is supposed to maintain the sidewalk, then it should be in the document.
I can't, I can't get them, I can't get them to agree to it in an easement agreement that they're not party to. She would have to do a separate private agreement with Calvary Lutheran, Calvary Lutheran Church to maintain the, to shovel the snow and ice. Because this easement is just between us and the Hickside Friends Cemetery.
So now it's the board's side.
But in this, it's, it's agreeing to maintain easement, not us.
Well, it's giving us the rights if we ever have to go in there and do any maintenance. The first course of action would always be whatever in our ordinance, if there's any maintenance that has to be done. But it gives us the right to go in there and do it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so.
I'd just like to make one comment here.
Mm-hmm.
This has been like a two-year process. So what's the next step? Now we have the easement placed now for our suspension tonight, and then we have the engineering stuff done. Uh, we're ready to put this out to bid, is that correct?
Bidding, um, finish up the design and bid out and construct it.
That's this year, right? We're planning to get it done.
Planning to get it done this year, I believe. Brian, there's, the design work isn't too extensive, it's likely to do.
I don't believe it is now.
I think there's some stormwater cleanup there. I think Chris mentioned that there's some stormwater cleanup that needs to be done.
They have to repair all of the bid documents as well.
Right, right. And we received a grant now for this in about eighty-five thousand dollars plus, right? And we have money in the budget as well.
I believe there's a hundred and five thousand dollars in the budget.
So the reason why we're not be able to receive all of this stuff, after tonight?
Not that I foresee.
Right, after two years, that's, it's taken a while, but finally started happening. I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Goldberg, who was one of the, who was the resident of Cambridge Hall Apartments, initiated this whole process, went around to his residents, fellow residents, got a petition signed before this board, and for consideration, and we listened, and now we're at the point where we're ready to get this thing done. So just want to thank him for his advocacy.
Yeah, and also for Hickside Friends Cemetery for working with us to do this.
And just, our grant, our grant award is, we're getting, we'll get this done much sooner than our grant award. Our grant contract will expire because the grant expiration, I believe, is three years from award. Sometime in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay. Any other questions? I will make a motion to approve the easement agreement between the township and Hickside Friends Cemetery. Okay, thank you. Is there any final comments or questions from the board or anyone in attendance? Done?
I've just gone down the whiteboard. Is there still any questions as far as the maintenance?
I don't think so. I mean, the discussion, which maybe wasn't concluded thoroughly, was that we don't have the words specifically about maintaining meaning, snow and ice removal in the easement agreement, but our ordinances are very specific about the property owner, it's still the property of Hickside Friends, are responsible for snow and ice removal. They have said in emails that they're going to get the church to be responsible for it, but that's on them. It's not quite what the township has to have a formal agreement between those parties.
How about having a motion with adding the wording?
Well, the, the documents already been signed by the property owner. Now, like I said, we, you know, we've got the belt braces with the fact that we have in our ordinances that the property owner is responsible for ice and snow removal on sidewalks, not the township.
That's true, but we don't have easements over everybody's sidewalks in the township.
The only reason we need an easement in this case is to actually do the construction, because there isn't enough right-of-way to complete, to complete the construction of the project.
So it's a temporary easement?
There's a permanent to do.
There was additional right-of-way that was missing. It's an easement in lieu of additional right-of-way.
So it's a permanent easement?
There is a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement.
Maybe we should just...
I'm comfortable. If the board knows I'm comfortable, you don't have to vote for the motion.
It's okay, it's okay.
This allows us to move on here.
Okay, so we have the motion. Is there any other comments or questions? Right, so we're ready to take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing no, the motion passes five zero. Okay, now we move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is Possible Approval of an upgrade of the AEDs in the municipal, in all municipal facilities. You, I'm kind of reading the wrong thing here. Let me go through the actual information provided to the board. So before the board of supervisors this evening is a discussion regarding potential safety equipment purchases. As a member of the Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust, the township is eligible to utilize funds through their Risk Control Grant Program. This program offers funds to members in good standing, which the township is, to make purchases to assist in reducing the frequency and severity of injuries or illnesses. The current fund balance available to the township is twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy, it's eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-three cents. And any unused funds are rolled over for our future use. The township's Employee Safety Committee recently met and discussed the procurement of safety equipment that may be needed. Following items, the corresponding costs have been identified. Upgrade the township AEDs at a cost of eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Our budget for twenty twenty-five had already included upgrading the AEDs in the Police Department, but this will now enable us to update AEDs in all the township departments. Next is Underground Utility Locating Device for the Public Works Department at a cost of two thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Arc Flash Safety Protective Equipment, three thousand dollars, for a total sum of seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. The cost of these items is covered through the DVWCT Grant Program. However, the township would acquire the items first and then submit for reimbursement. With the exception of the two AEDs in the Police Department, the remaining items were not included in our twenty twenty-five budget. So does the board have any questions on this topic?
This, this Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust, would that also cover for the cost of training as well? Safety training draws for safety equipment?
I believe it would. I'd have to go back and look at the eligibility requirements. Because generally what you do is, there is a one-page form that you fill out that basically lists the piece of equipment and the benefit. And then you attach the, you attach the proof of purchase to it, and then they reimburse you. I believe you could do training, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Now, the Delaware Valley Workers Comp Trust does offer, and we take advantage of a lot of free training resources, so it may not be something that's eligible for reimbursement, just because of all the programs that they offer to its members. Then again, we participate, and we've hosted a few of them in the past.
The reason why I'm asking is, I think it would be important and worthwhile for our employees to get OSHA's hand and for the supervisory employees to get OSHA thirty training, that can be paid for in this program. I think we should pursue that.
I can look into it.
And also, I noticed the underground locating device, that's already been purchased, I believe, hasn't it? I see there's a check for that in our bills for this year.
I believe Mark did, I believe Mark had already purchased that.
Yeah, definitely we need that. We have to have those.
Actually, that, I do believe, I do believe that that is a very valuable tool to have, especially with some of the things we've been encountering in Fresh Meadows and when things are mismarked. I think it can, I actually think it can save lives, and I don't use that lightly.
So just to follow up on that, so having already, we're already going to authorize this purchase and approve the bill tonight, then we can immediately submit for reimbursement, or do we have to wait until all these other pieces are done and then submit once?
No, I can do each one individually.
And the arc flash equipment, that's absolutely essential. If you're going to be working on energy charge equipment, in fact, it's a requirement now by the N F P A. So, yeah, and the AEDs, obviously, they're definitely needed as well.
So as it relates to the AEDs, so this is for the purchase of seven across all of our departments. So we were already looking to upgrade, obviously, the Police Department as well and potentially upgrade the Administration. And then when we met, we decided it would probably be best just to look at every, every building. So there's going to be seven that are purchased total. We also have, what's not included in here, but we'll probably look to do either later this year or next year, is potentially upgrade, if necessary, our portable AEDs, and I'd also like to have them at Barker Park, Cooper Smith Park, and Lambert Park, because we do already have an AED, a community park, that was donated to the township in twenty twenty-two. But I think since we, I think since we have, since we have camp facilities at all, at those parks, and since they're actively used, we should have AEDs. Now, we do have portable AEDs in all of the police cars, I believe, and three of the public works rooms.
Who makes up the important Safety Committee of Townships?
Representatives, basically, the department that's around the bar.
Do those AEDs have to be replaced every so many years, or calibrated, or checked, or?
That's what these upgrades are for. We do replace batteries in them, and we've purchased batteries through this safety, this safety program.
Okay, so somebody goes around and checks all the AEDs every so many?
We do, yes.
Okay. Oh, okay, good.
The, the problem running through it, we probably use it by force most of the time. The equipment will age out to where purchasing the batteries for some of the equipment they come to town. And in order to get certain funding to replace, it becomes a little bit more difficult because they aged the equipment. And it makes sense for us at that point to replace them with the, with the new oil. They do see some abuse in our cars, just because of nature of what we do, and they are aware of our trouble as well.
How long do you think they last, like, two years, and what they use to...
It depends. I mean, you, you check them, and now they have a status on the equipment, too, to let you know that the battery is good. It's like a quick cycle. It varies. With being the weather, being the cold, being the heat, you know, the cycle, it affects it differently depending on where they are. Some of our patrol vehicles that are out, most days of the week, obviously, will happen fast. But we try to put our newest equipment there as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So Chris, just in terms of process, I mean, ours total tonight is less than is available to us. How are you, when are you going to make the decisions to whether you want to get additional AEDs for the parks that don't have them?
I asked Lisa to put together pricing, so we'll review the pricing accordingly. So we'll have about fifty, six hundred dollars remaining, and that will roll over into twenty twenty-six, and then there will be an additional allocation in twenty twenty-six. We meet with representatives from the Workers Compensation Trust to do their annual survey in December of every year. She tours all the buildings and everything, and she'll give us an update on what our balances at that time.
Okay, well, I've heard that the board believes that all these are worthwhile purchases from this program. Is there a board member willing to make a motion to proceed with the previously described items? Thank you. So a motion from Mr. Helman, second by Mr. Walsh. Is there any final public comments or questions already from the board on the motion?
And just so the board is aware, I cleared all of these with the Workers Comp Trust, and they assured me that they are eligible.
Any, any comments or questions? Yes?
This is Ashley Warren. Could you tell me what exactly the public works folks are locating on the ground?
We get calls for PA one calls. We'll locate anything like, potentially for our utilities sewer and storm sewer. However, it's mostly for if things are mismarked. We run into a lot of situations where gas lines are mismarked, cable lines are mismarked, water lines are mismarked, and it helps us be able, electrical lines are mismarked, and it helps us to be able to adequately locate those items. The utility companies have to go out and mark all of their infrastructure, but it's not always perfect. We ran into that situation in Fresh Meadows last year.
For the gas line?
With the gas line. We ran into it as well with, it wasn't really mismarked, but it wasn't, it wasn't, it was a lot closer than anticipated. We ran into a cable line in Verizon. So we have had it in situations, and this is going to be very helpful.
Yeah, that's, you know, when somebody that calls, does the phone call to call before you take the eight-one-one number, you know, you have like three business days for all your utilities to come out. The township is one of those, has to come out and mark the ground as to where the sewer lines would be or whatever. Anything that township would help, so that's what this would be used for.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, we're ready to take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing no, the motion passes five zero. Agenda Item Number Eight is Approval of the Meeting Minutes from June third, twenty twenty-five. Does the board have any comments or questions on the, the meeting minutes? I provided a couple of typo corrections to Mr. Bayshaw, and Mr. Helman did as well. Okay, I will make a motion to approve the board of supervisors' meeting minutes for June the third, twenty twenty-five through the second. Thank you, Ashley. Is there any public comments or questions on this motion, on the meeting minutes? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing no, the motion passes five zero. Agenda Item Number Nine is Approval of the Bills to be Paid. So this is the manuals bills list for the meeting and the general ledger bills. Is there a motion to approve the bills for this, for this evening?
All right, motion.
Thank you. Now, is there a second? I'll second. Is there any board comments or questions on the individual bills to pay?
Yeah, I just have one regarding the first page, refund summer rec program to an individual for two hundred and forty dollars. Do we normally do something like that, like, is most of the money given?
They, they cancel before the program starts, yes.
But we can give it back, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other board comments on the bills? Okay, is there any public comments or questions on the bills list? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing no, the motion passes five zero. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at six forty-four. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor of adjourned, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you for being here.